With the Pledge of Allegiance tonight led by our special honorary, Terry Stater.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're going to start open forum tonight with a special recognition and thank you for Terry Stater and with great gratitude for my research assistant Andrea Perner-Sweet for providing some of this background, I'd just like to share a little bit of Terry's history both in service to our country and the town. Senior Chief Petty Officer Terry Stater joined the United States Navy in 1971. His occupational specialty was an electronics technician. He specialized in long-range UHF, ultrasonic frequency radar, and UHF/ VHF communication systems and microwave radar. Terry was assigned to the USS Gridley, a guided missile cruiser whose home port at various times was Long Beach, San Francisco, and San Diego. While on the US Gridley as part of the Vietnam War effort, Terry served three tours of duty in the Western Pacific. Over the course of his naval career, Terry attained the rank of Senior Chief Petty Officer, or he ate. He received many honors and awards, received two Navy and Marine Corps commendations and two Navy Achievement Awards. He received the New England Sailor of the Year. After 28 years of service, both active and reserved, Terry was honorably discharged in 1999 in a retirement ceremony that was held at the Charleston Navy Yard aboard the USS Constitution. Terry moved to Westford in 1983. He immediately became involved with the Police Amateur Radio Team at Westford. He also became active in Skywarn, a national network of volunteer severe weather spotters. Terry has also served as an instructor for the Massachusetts Emergency Management Agency in its Nuclear Preparedness Division. He's taught classes for the Computer Emergency Readiness Team and at the Upper Merrimack Valley Reserve Corps. In 2006, he was awarded the Neshoba Valley Chamber of Commerce Robert W. Lewis Award as an outstanding citizen volunteer for his efforts in providing amateur radio support and services throughout the region. Terry began working for the town of Westford in 2010 as our Veterans Service Officer and Veterans Agent. Thank you, Terry. Terry served as my Veterans Service Officer. Since he became Terry, since he began, Terry has been a fierce advocate on behalf of our veterans and their families. He's worked tirelessly on their behalf, reaching out to them, connecting them with the benefits they may be entitled to and services that are available to them. Serving as a liaison between our veterans and the military organizations, offering a friendly and sympathetic ear when needed, organizing both our Veterans Day and Morale Day ceremonies, and undertaking the sad and solemn duty of coordinating funerals when called upon. So, on behalf of the grateful town, tonight we'd like to recognize Terry Stater for his service. I know many of the folks here are here to celebrate you, and I know Mike wanted to say a few words and others would like to say a few words in honor of Terry. Please.
I'll keep mine relatively short. I wanted to thank Terry for stepping back into the role for a short two-month stint that turned into close to 10. I appreciate the patience and also wanted to thank, I wanted to thank Lynn for letting us use him for as long as we did. Thank you for not killing me. He's really been a great asset to us as we bridged into our new VSO, Colin, but really do appreciate the help he gave us in the interim period, that short, short two months. So, thank you. Thank you, Lynn.
And I will echo Mike's comments. Thank you so much, Terry. I think you were one of the first people I met when I came to the town of Westford as Town Manager. You were one of the friendly faces at the Cameron Senior Center and all throughout town. And when Mike and I were brainstorming who could we bring in to help bridge that two-month gap, you were the one that came to mind. You really helped us understand the program a lot more as we were both new to the town and help us launch Colin into some great success. So, we wish you a happy retirement, but we know we will not miss seeing you around town. We hope to see you many, many more times. And again, thank you, Lynn, for allowing Terry to do that as well. We really appreciate his service to the town and to the country. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from the board?
Sir, if you could please say your name.
Yes, Scott Houston, 36th Landing Road. I met Terry at my very first Memorial Day as a SUC Word Member, walked across the Common and I met Terry, I said, "So, you know, tell me what are the needs of our veterans?" And within five minutes, she understood that Terry didn't have a care of an administration, he was the care of a pastor. You know, he could talk about people, not names, but just, you know, his heart was clearly in this and for them. And, you know, as a country, we, you know, have a multiread list that says we leave no man behind on the battlefield. Terry left no veteran behind in retirement. So, you know, my dad was a veteran, my uncle was a veteran, South Carolina, my uncle had great care, New Hampshire, my dad did not. So, yeah, thank you for being to Westford what we really should be doing for all veterans.
Please.
Well, I'm the wife, but he never calls me that, which is one of the reasons we're still married. He never ever calls me the wife. That's such a military thing, but I'm glad that's lost on Terry. I just realized this is the perfect time for me to be able to say to Westford what actually happened when we first moved here. We drove down a street with a realtor, Terry saw a 50-foot amateur radio tower in the back of Bo Boninger's backyard. Many of you might know him. And he knew immediately there was at least one ham in Westford, and they would be friends. And he was, Bo was the one who started the Police Amateur Radio Team. So, immediately Terry found his niche. And as you know, many of you know, if you don't know, you can tell, he grew up in a small town, 5,000 people, everybody did what you do for your town. Volunteer, his dad was a volunteer firefighter. His mom would listen to the scanner to see where dad was this time, and that's just what he grew up with. And all I can say is when we drove down that street, I had a feeling that Westford was the right place. And I'm always glad we landed here. When we transferred, it was 1983, I think, we transferred from the Midwest. So, it's been a great ride because he's an interesting guy.
Please.
Hi, Colin Bodie, I'm the new Veterans Services Officer. The number-one thing I've heard coming into town is you have some really big shoes to fill in regards to Terry. I thought I had a pretty decent idea. I'm a combat veteran myself. I had to apply to benefits through the system and everything, and Terry showed me that I still have a lot to learn in so many ways, and he's just such a master of just everything about this town. He's on multiple committees in this town, and I've never met somebody who's such a public servant, honestly, in my entire life, so. And in a lot of ways, we had very similar experiences in a lot of ways in the military. He was in Vietnam during the evacuation in Saigon. I was in a combat zone in the Middle East during the evacuation in Afghanistan and Kabul. And, yeah, he's just an outstanding individual. Thank you for your service, Terry, and thank you for all the wisdom. Thank you very much.
Do you want to say anything, Terry? I can say, I can say one more thing if you're, if you're more comfortable than you.
He has so much free time now. Look at all the police.
I was ready to turn over the keys, but, but thank you, I appreciate it. It is a, it's, it's wonderful to be able to get benefits to a veteran who really deserves it. I remember several instances that come to mind and being at funerals and just getting awarded, people getting them out of financial situations and just, you know, getting them connected up with services that they needed. And to me, it was a pleasure and I really enjoyed that way. I took this job to bed with me at night, and it was part of what you do. So, it's a commitment, and I really love doing it for this town of Westford. It's such a great town. Each of the villages have its own personalities, and it reminds me so much of what I grew up with in a small town. So, again, thanks for all the support we've had. I loved working here in Town Hall and, and seeing everybody out on, out on the campus, as I say. So, I've really enjoyed, as my knees knock at Veterans Day, Memorial Day, and 9/11 service, just to get up there and say a few words, but it still is a great opportunity to serve a community that really has meant a lot to us. Lived here longer than any other place since, since 83, so. But I've certainly enjoyed my time in the service, and I'd like to thank everybody again for my opportunity to be of service to the town of Westford. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. Dance card is full.
There is time.
We, I understand we have one comment online.
Yes, we do. I'll unmute Diane Wood. Go ahead, Diane.
She appears to have muted.
Diane, go ahead.
So, my only comment was regarding the camera from those of us who are watching remotely and, and the fact that the camera's not picking up people at the mic.
Yep, so we will manually do that. I know that Nick is doing his best in the back room. Thank you so much for letting us know.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
Thanks, Diane. Any other, any other comments for Terry? I'll just say I'm glad you're not going far, Terry, because you're the first smiling face I look for every time I come to a veterans event, so. I'll, I need my compass there, so. Thank you. Okay. Other, other items for open forum or announcements from the board? Anything from the, Megan?
I almost wish this meeting could close and a new one could open because I don't really want to follow that. So many nice things about Terry. Megan O'Connell, 44 South Chompsdor. I'm speaking today to request that you do not vote to appoint, to approve the appointment of Lisa Kilpatrick to the open seat on the DEI Committee. It's not because of anything to do with Lisa per se, but because the process for soliciting and vetting interested residents is faulty at best, prejudicial at worst, which I think is contrary to what the DEI Committee should be about. Over the past few months, I've been aware that the, that the DEI Committee had been discussing whether a particular now former member should be removed for various reasons. During the DEI Committee's April 30th meeting, it was indicated that that member was indeed removed and even seat open. There was also an agenda item on that meeting to review the DEI application of Lisa Kilpatrick. I spoke during that open forum to say that no application should be reviewed or considered until the town website correctly indicated that there was an open seat to allow other residents to submit interest, which I then did within days and followed up several days later with an email to Joe and Anjali expressing my interest. I never heard anything, which is why at the May 28th meeting, when I saw the agenda item, open resident seat applications review, I attended the meeting thinking quite reasonably, I would argue, that when that agenda item was reached, Joe and Anjali would go through the applications of Lisa, myself, and any others that may have been received. And you can imagine my frustration when there was not even a mention that other applications had been received, but simply a move to recommend Lisa with no debate. I've written and spoken before the Select Board since May of last year, expressing concern about the broken RAF review and appointment process. The Select Board has had over 12 months to do anything to fix the process, yet it appears to be as broken as ever. I respectfully request that you do not act on the DEI Committee's request tonight, but instead ensure that every interested resident who submitted an RAF for that committee be given fair consideration. And further that at a future Select Board and School Committee meeting where an appointment will be considered, that the meeting packet not only include RAFs received, but why each of those was either ruled in or out, which appears to be the custom for other committees in recent, in recent months. Thank you.
Thank you, Megan. And Megan, both for you and anyone else who might be interested, we will be discussing that, that request as part of our 805 Old New Business Agenda.
I have two items.
Please.
So, I have two items for open forum. One, just would like to remind members of the public that on Thursday, June 12th, we have a tri-board meeting between the Select Board, School Committee, and Finance Committee to review the fiscal '25 budget status, to review where we are going in fiscal '26 based upon the state budget, review efficiencies, and review the fiscal '27 budget process. And then of a second matter, you will see announced on the town website likely tomorrow or the next day, NIMCOG, our Regional Planning Commission, is looking for input on the Greater Lowell Bicycle and Pedestrian Safety Visioning Plan. We've asked the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail Representatives to put something up at the kiosk, and we're putting that up for residents. So, there's a survey that they're looking for residents to fill out, as well as there's a public forum on July 8th. So, we'll get that information out to everyone later this week.
It's probably not too early to mention the Juneteenth celebration. If anyone has the specifics for that at the top of their hands, I should have pulled it up first, it's on the 16th.
10:00 AM.
19.
No, it's on the 19th.
10:00 AM.
16th and 19th, so June 19th and the time is?
10:00 AM. 10:30 is the speaker and reception and the ECA.
Thank you so much. So, 10:00 AM, for those that couldn't hear Valerie, 10:00 AM on the Common for flag raising, followed by a speaker event. Anything else we want to make sure we mention here in public forum?
All true.
Okay. We'll then move on to our 705 consent agenda item, request to approve the following special license. The event is Country Fair. The applicant is Sandra Habe. The date is June 14th, 2025. The time is 2:00 PM to 6:00 PM. Location is Good Pick and Farm, 5 and 6 Pool Road in Westford. Do I have a motion to approve? Some move? Second? All those in favor? Aye. Excellent. We could also mention that this Saturday is the Strawberry Arts Festival, much beloved community event on the Common, so we look forward to welcoming everyone there for Strawberry Shortcake at 11:30. Onto the 707, public hearing, National Grid petition for joint or identical pole location. Massachusetts Electric Company, DBA, National Grid, and Verizon New England request permissions to locate poles, wires, and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along and across the following public way. Public way is listed here in, in the agenda. Do we have a representative from National Grid Horizon here?
Yes, I just promoted David Boucher, and he wanted to vote to open the public hearing and then get, have it settled.
I'll accept the motion to open the public hearing.
Second?
On favor?
Aye.
I think you roll call for exact session.
You don't need it to open a public hearing, unless someone was remote online, you're all here.
Okay, so we are, the public hearing is open. And welcome to, is it David?
Yes, I believe David Boucher. Are you on? Can you hear us? So, you're on mute.
I had to unmute.
There you go. We can hear you now.
Okay. Welcome, David. If you'd like to describe the, what's being proposed here, please.
Yes, yes, thank you very much. David Boucher, Senior Designer, National Grid, 1101 Turnpike Street, North Yanover. As you can see in the drawing, there's a new commercial development, Stanley Way, located in, off of Groton Road. And in the drawing, you'll see right in the middle of where the driveway in the plans the customer has, there's a pole right in the middle. They needed to relocate that. And what we're asking for is to remove that pole and relocate it to the right, which is easterly, as you can see in the drawing, off the roadway, the paved roadway and in, on the side of the road, in, in the same line as our utility lines are going overhead down Groton Road. That would take care of the pole that is in their driveway prohibiting traffic, and we would still have Pole 29 holding up our lines. But what it also does is it creates a longer span from that new location of Pole 29 to the pole to the west, which is beyond where we're saying we want Pole 30. It's so long that that's why we need Pole 30, because the lines would sag so low, it creates a, a span that's over, I believe it's over 180 feet, which is, we like a mile, about 150. Anything over 150, it starts to sag too much, especially with all the, the utilities that are on the, the poles nowadays with telephone and cable TV, increasing all the stuff that they have on poles now, so. So, in the end, as, as a wrap-up, exactly what we're doing here, there's a pole in the middle of the driveway, we want to take it away and relocate it to the new spot shown, and then add one other pole. So, we're taking away one pole and adding two to accommodate for access to the new development.
Great, thanks, David. Very clear. Any questions from the board? Okay, there being none, I will entertain a motion to?
Any questions from the public?
Oh, any questions from the public? Sure, please.
My name is Mark O'Brien.
Could you, could you please come up to the mic? Thank you. We ask you to come up to the mic because that's how people who are listening remotely can hear us.
Hi, my name is Mark O'Brien. I live at 477 Groton Road, which is pretty much right across the street. And I have a little map of telephone poles that I made before I came here, and it looks to me like there's two telephone poles very close together there. Are they going to get rid of them both? I mean, if they're going to get rid of one, I think they should have got rid of both.
David, I don't know if you heard the question, but the speaker asked, he said there are currently two telephone poles, I guess. So, you're, so you're right across, so right across the street there, two, they're located very close now, and you're asking how, if they'll be affected in any way?
Yes, the way I look at it, and I can show you my little picture, in that driveway, where there is obviously a telephone pole, if, you know, a pole or something, right in the middle of the driveway, there's like two of them there. So, I just?
So, you're, you're saying there's currently two there?
Yeah.
And so you have a question?
So?
David, does that, does that sound right to you in the, in the spot where there's currently a pole, or are there two right there?
It, it doesn't sound right, and if there is two, it might be an old, I've heard of double poles. It could have been an old pole that we changed out.
Okay.
And, and we're probably going to take away the two of them. I can't, I'm sorry, I can't confirm what, what the resident is saying. You're at number 77, sir?
477. 477.
I think I heard you say that.
So, the Iron Rose there is at 478. So, I'm, it's directly across, and I'm 477, across the street is a 476, and it's, it's right off of my driveway, you know, going across Groton Road. There's actually two more telephone poles there. Now, I don't know whether they're functioning or not, but I just, it just, it sure looks to me like in, this is my driveway, this is the Iron Rose, there's two poles here, and then over here is the driveway, which has the pole right in the middle. But in, in my view, there's two of them there.
Okay. So, are the two poles right immediately next to each other?
Well, yeah, I'd say pretty close. It's, they both, I drew them both in the driveway.
Okay.
In my mind, so.
So, unfortunately, I don't think we have a picture of that tonight, but our town engineer was indicating that that could be a double pole, where you might have had an original pole and a second pole installed, I think, for support. Would you like?
I'll tell you what, what you can do, Council. I, I would suggest, just to, for the process of moving things along, we certainly want to take care of this gentleman and his issues, and I'm, I'm getting it translated from you, and it's a little difficult getting it back and forth, and for the, for the, to move this thing along a little bit, maybe you can, I think you have my, my phone number and my email address, maybe you can give that to the resident. And I, I'll, I'm, I'm in at 7 o'clock tomorrow morning, you can give me a call, and I'll, I'll understand what you're trying, your concern is, a little bit better with a quick phone call, anytime tomorrow morning, and, and we can, I'll, I'll address it at that point, if that's okay with you.
Yeah.
Does that satisfy your team?
You give me the, the number, I'll, I can take a picture and send it to him in an email and say, you know?
Okay, yeah.
It's like two weeks.
That's great, so we'll, we'll make sure, I guess, Mike, could you make sure this resident gets, gets that info? And Paul, did you want to say something? Town engineer Paul Sterick.
Paul Sterick, Town Engineer. So, they, they installed, it's a double pole, so they installed the pole in the wrong place. They're removing those and going to put them on the sides as they should be.
I see. Okay, so it's, so it's a, it's a situation that will be corrected as part of this effort.
Correct, yes.
And please reach out to the representative, and we'll get you that information.
Okay, so are you part of National Grid?
No. So, the resident is correct to say this is a problem that needs to be fixed, but that's why we're here, that's why National Grid is here tonight, to fix it and, and get your permission to do that.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Thanks, Paul.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the public? Anything online?
I don't see anything online.
Okay.
Mike, if you don't mind, grabbing this gentleman's conference.
Yeah, just so he doesn't have to stay. Thanks, Mike. Okay, with that, I will entertain a motion to grant permission to locate poles, wires, and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along the public way as described in our agenda.
I'll move. Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
I'll now entertain a motion to close the public hearing. I'll move.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, public hearing is closed. Thank you all, and thank you, David.
Okay, thank you very much.
Next up is 715, request for a change of manager on National Law 13812, all alcohol restaurants liquor license for Burton's Grill, Westford LLC, 1 Cornerstone Square. It looks like we might have Margot Ellis here.
Yep, I'm promoting Margot Gillis. Yes.
Thank you so much. And while we're doing that, Patty, does it appear that everything's in order?
I looked at it.
Thank you.
And the town clerk signed off on everything.
It's fine, it's, change of manager is a simple, one of the more simple processes.
Fairly routine, okay. Thanks so much. Understanding that this is a fairly routine item, welcome, welcome, Margot, and let us know if there's anything we should know about this.
Hi, great, thanks for having me. I'm Margot Gillis. I'm an attorney with McDermott Quilty Miller &amp; Hanley in Boston, and I'm here on behalf of the licensee, doing business as Burton's Grill, in their application for LLC change of managers. So, they currently have five LLC managers, and two of them are remaining on the license, Mitchell Kahn and Anthony Akil, and then Denise Herrera, Kevin Haran, and John Doyle are being removed as LLC managers. And so, there's no changes to the day-to-day operations of the license, it's just administrative. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Attorney Gillis. Any, any questions tonight? Any questions from the public? Anything online, Kristin?
I don't see anything online. Thank you for us.
Oh, just briefly, is this something that has to be approved by the state simultaneously, or does it go to the state after this?
Goes to the state after this.
After this, okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, great, thanks, Sean. So, I will ask for a motion to approve the change of manager on National Law 13812 alcohol restaurant license as described.
So, moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Excellent.
We're now moving on to our 720 item, which is a joint meeting with the Finance Committee to consider fiscal '25 budget transfers in accordance with National Law Chapter 44, Section 33B, and we will give our colleagues on the Finance Committee just a moment to gather here and then be called into session.
And Christina Dennis is in the room for your knowledge.
Thank you.
I believe I promoted everyone, so we'll double check. Raise your hand if you didn't get a promotion request.
into session, please sit and welcome.
Oh, sure. Thanks, I didn't, I didn't hear you, Tom. So, I will call this meeting of the Finance Committee on June 10th to order.
Good, thank you. Kristin, are you going to, you and Dan going to take us through these items?
Yes, I'll start and Dan will supplement where I may need assistance. So, every year around this time, since about 2016, the state has allowed municipalities to do what is called budget transfers without the need for town meeting, but by a vote of the Select Board and the Finance Committee. We did this last year, so those of you who are on those boards are familiar with that. We do have several new members who may not be familiar. Especially in the last few years, we have been budgeting very tightly on our accounts related to the fiscal challenges that the town of Westford has seen. So, you will see several requests on this agenda this evening, and really, that's primarily due to budgetary constraints and unforeseen circumstances that we've realized over the past fiscal year. So, we're happy to go through them line by line. We will need a vote, and you're welcome to take the vote all at once or vote on each item separately, and we're here to answer questions. So, I'm happy to go through the first few, and you will see that all of these transfers are coming out of waste collection and disposal. So, before we go through them, I'll just ask Dan to give a few sentences of how well we're running for solid waste and recycling, waste disposal, and how we have that available for these other transfers.
So, we are running very well, which is promising. So, for FY '25, we have a solid waste disposal budget of $742,000. Right now, we're on pace to expend about $570,000. So, that's a, a large closeout at the end of fiscal year. In addition, our recycling budget, the, the Kamai's pricing is doing very well, we're spending about $3,000 a month, where we have about $160,000 budget. about $160,000 budget. So again, another six-figure year closeout, just due to the market conditions of that. So it's very promising for our solid waste budget.
And we do have other department heads on Zoom and in the room if there's other questions related to these transfers. So may I start going through the list?
Why don't we go through, why don't we go through the list, and if it's okay with you, Madam Chair, Christina, if, why don't we proceed through and have Kristin describe them, and then maybe with the Select Board, I'll go through them and see if there's a hold on any of them, or whether we're ready to vote on them as a group. And then, actually, by practice, I think we ask the Finance Committee to typically do that first. So why don't we go through the items first, and then I'll turn it over to you, Christina?
Okay, that sounds good.
Okay.
So the first item is related to the Select Board expenses, meeting minutes. We have a certain budgeted amount every year. We are requesting that $740 be transferred from the solid waste disposal account to the meeting minutes account in Select Board expenses. As you, current and newer board members realize, we've had an exorbitant number of executive sessions this year related to leases and other contract negotiations. We've had several special meetings of the Select Board. So this is to cover our minute-taker, Patty Doobie, for four minutes remaining related to this year. The next is a town manager expense for our Zen City invoice, coming out of the solid waste disposal account, as we stated before. This was originally authorized to come out of the ARPA account. And when we were doing the year-end, the purchase order did not get processed by December 31st for the Zen City account. And therefore, we fell short in the town manager's account by $12,000. So we're looking to transfer that account money to cover our Zen City account through March of next year. Dan, I'll let you move forward with the legal services account.
Sure. So with the legal services account, we're seeking an additional $30,000 transfer. This was one of our underfunded accounts for the year. Based on last year, we spent $167,000. We're running at about $170,000 this year. So we're right on target with last year. We did have a couple of years where spending was very low. I hadn't seen that in like 20 years here. And then the budget was reduced accordingly. So we do need to put some of that money back into the budget, both this year and probably look at it in the future as well. It really depends on what's going on with town, what in the town, you know, what problems we're facing, and that really drives the legal budget. So $30,000, we should be able to get through the rest of the year.
Carry it through with HR.
Yeah. So for HR, this is actually related to the hiring of the seven firefighters that we're, we're bringing on board right now. For each firefighter, they need a physical and a psychological exam. And the number of firefighters we're hiring right now was not anticipated when we put the budget together 18 months ago. So to cover the cost of those psychological and physical exams, HR is requesting $6,513. And then the next one is for $15,000 for the public buildings budget. Public buildings did just get a reserve fund transfer last month in the amount of $20,000. However, after one AP warrant, they're down to $4,700, which, if you know how our public buildings go, you know, there's an emergency every other week with that. So we, we want to give them a little bit of buffer just to make it through the end of the year, rather than have to call another meeting in another two weeks, just to give them a little seed money. Whatever they, they don't use, they will close out to the general fund. And then the last two are for the fire department, for their expenses. If you'll see in your packet, the fire department is requesting $40,872 to provide gear and outfit the seven new firefighters that they are hiring. The chief and deputy chief went through an exercise where they, they costed out all the equipment that they need to get started. And then they modified that request, like the radios we are reusing from the previous firefighters. And we were able to get a grant for the helmets. But the balance of that is now $40,872 that they need to outfit them sooner than later. They can't share gear. It needs to be tight-fitting for their protection. So this is really stuff that needs to be ordered new. And then the final request...
Request a hold on that one, please, Dan?
I'm sorry?
I just wanted a hold on that one.
Sure.
Excellent.
And then the vehicle maintenance. Currently, there are six vehicles that have had repairs within the fire department in the past month. I worked with the, the chief to go through the budget, and the office manager, we will down the amount to $20,800 by using some of the, the other anticipated closeouts within our operating budget to offset the cost of these vehicle repairs. Again, I think the, the budget was at $70,000 for vehicle maintenance out of $36,000 budget. So it's, you know, the repairs are very expensive every time something breaks.
Just before we go over to Christine and Finance Committee, I have one question on, on number two, the Zen City. So the ARPA funding was required to be used by a certain date. The fact that this wasn't processed, does that mean we processed some other thing and it's placed to fully exhaust the available funds?
So basically, the remaining balance, we used to pay for the December health insurance bill.
Okay.
So basically, that $12,000 was transferred into the health insurance trust. We didn't lose that money. It's just allocated or something.
And the timing of processing is because we received the bill late, or are we just busy at that time of year, or?
The bill did come in very late, yes. But, yeah, combination of...
Okay. Any other, any other questions from the board before we go to the Finance Committee? Chris?
So if we didn't have the savings from the, from our waste disposal, how would we have dealt with this from a funding perspective?
So I believe we have other accounts that have available funds, so we would have potentially used those accounts. I'll let Dan read it.
Yeah, every year, we have turnover, we have closeouts. This was just easier to take it from the solid waste disposal because we had enough to fund everything we needed right now. So, and it's under the town manager's purview to run the solid waste. So rather than ask the departments for funding for certain line items, it was just easier just to tap this source.
Thank you. Other questions? Okay. Christina?
So I'll open it up to the Finance Committee if you have any questions on these. I'd like to start, actually, I'll, I'll start with the first one. For the public buildings, could, is, is Jeff Goodman there to just kind of explain what the, what the unexpected repairs were that came up in those, in those three buildings, I believe?
Yes, I just promoted him as a panelist, so just give him one moment to transfer over.
Good evening. Yeah, so the unexpected expenditures that we've had in public buildings this year, they've been pretty significant, most of which have been up at the DPW Garage at 28 North Street. We had $39,000 worth of expenses this year incurred for major generator repairs on both of their generators, pump repairs at the booster pump station. I think we had around $8,000 worth of roof repairs that were, were badly needed. The roof has been leaking up there for quite some time. We also had some emergency repairs that were needed at the senior center related to the boiler relief valves. We had two cabinet unit heaters that needed to be replaced over there. And we also had some elevator repairs that, that, that cropped up that needed to be addressed over there. Off the top of my head, I'm trying to think. We also had...
Police station was mentioned?
Yeah, we had about $2,300 worth of repairs that needed to be made on one of the circulation pumps over there that, you know, we have two main pumps that function for that building, and one of the pumps was badly in need of repairs, about mid-April needed to be done. So, and then on top of that, just a lot of other little miscellaneous expenses that crop up since that transfer we had in April. But we're confident that the $15,000 we're asking for today will just be a real security blanket for us for the rest of the way here. We don't anticipate using it, but as Dan mentioned, we don't want to get into a bind and have to call a special meeting between now and the end of June. So we're, we're hoping to turn the majority of this back. We just want to make sure we're covered if we need it.
Okay. Jeff, this is probably a pretty general question, so do your best to answer. But the, the things that came up unexpectedly, are they, are they things that we're going to see again? Like, and I'm trying to get to, can we, do we have a better maintenance plan going in so that some of these things maybe don't crop up in the future?
Yeah, well, the, yes, we, we are developing our preventative maintenance plans. That, that is something that we've been working very hard on. The reality of it is, Christina, is that there is a lot of deferred maintenance that I've inherited over the past few years here. And I don't want to sit here and say that we're not going to have other things crop up in other buildings next year. But what we saw, particularly at the DPW this year, was really unprecedented. It was a, just a never-ending storm of unexpected things that cropped up. So some of this stuff is deferred, or had been deferred, and we're playing catch-up a little bit right now. I don't anticipate this being an annual thing.
Okay.
And I'm knocking...
Sure. Our facilities assessment that we're doing is a 10-year capital plan, and many of the buildings that Jeff's talking about right now are covered under that. So we should be seeing those items popped into capital over the next 10 years. We can't say that there wouldn't be an emergency here or there, but we're trying to do a better job to plan this out into the future.
Okay, great. That's, that's kind of what I was getting to, is just, you know, do we have a, a plan going forward?
Yes.
Okay. Nate, you had a question on something?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Chair. I just, first, a couple of general questions and a line-specific question. My general question is, Dan, is, is the 125, 925 represented here by your estimation exhaust the, the additional funds that are, that are in that account for this fiscal year? Or is there additional on top of that, you know, and this is just what we need right now?
This is just what we need right now. So there's, there is a lot more within the solid waste recycling budget.
Okay.
So it would be 742 minus seven, or 570 would be the remaining?
Well, it's just one line item. There's also another $110,000 from recycling processing fees. So there is more money there, yes.
Okay. So my second question is, I, I'm surprised in seeing something like this, given that to get to the FY '25 budget, there was a, as you remember, we went through a, a non-override scenario that resulted in a substantial decrease to a number of budgets across the, the board, with the largest percentage of which was absorbed by the school department. And I'm surprised that there's nothing in here for the schools. And I'm wondering what the consultation was with the schools to see about their deficiencies for FY '25 when preparing this.
So the, the schools are exempt from budget transfers, along with light department state, so they're not eligible for these transfers?
They can't, they can't receive transfers from, for deficiencies in the year?
They cannot from the town departments. They have to go to town meeting for a transfer.
So it would be a special town meeting, then?
It would be a special town meeting if they need a transfer now, yes.
Okay. All right. Because my follow-up question to that was, I noticed that our tri-board meeting has a request from the school department for $400,000 out of a reserve fund. And just making sure, we're assuming that, we're thinking about that. But your, your point, Dan, is that the only way to do that is through town meeting?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. Thank you. My last question, more specifically, is on the fire department 220 outfit for new hires, 4872 for seven new firefighters. I went back and looked and saw that we had budgeted last year, I believe, or for this current fiscal year, for new firefighters, I think we had budgeted, or for protective clothing anyways, $36,500. And I'm trying to understand the intersection between that here, the protective clothing line in the budget, and the new hire funding.
Our fire chief is approaching. Mike, so please, chief.
Mike Denny, Fire Chief. The $36,000 is for replacement gear for the current membership. We're on a gear replacement plan for, every year, we replace so many sets of gear. The gear we're requesting to outfit the new firefighters wasn't, unfortunately, weren't, wasn't planned because we had a bunch of retirements and resignations and stuff like that. So the $36,000 line item is the outfit to replace gear that's coming due. And NFPA requires the gear to replace every 10 years.
Okay, great. Thank you, chief. I appreciate it. I'm all set, Madam Chair.
Okay. Thanks, Nate. Anybody else from the Finance Committee have a question?
Christina?
Dennis is in the room.
Dennis? Okay, we'll go to Dennis, and then John, did you have a question? John Friar?
Maybe, if it's not been covered.
Okay, go ahead, Dennis.
Yeah, just to follow up to Nate's question. The seven firefighters, I, I assume that these are all just replacements, or are they new additions? Are the firefighters just replacements for retirements, or are they, are there any additions to the, to the actual...
Chief, Chief Denny, please.
That is correct. They're replacements for retirements and resignations.
Thank you.
Okay, John?
So I guess, you know, Dan, some of these line items are, you know, one-off things, additional firefighters. Some of them are things that are going to be in, that are in the budget for, you know, this coming year. So did we make adjustments, you know, to some of these line items, like the legal services, you know, the vehicle maintenance? Those are the two that kind of stand out as, as items in the budget. Did we increase those so that we wouldn't necessarily get into this situation unless there was an extraordinary circumstance?
So, John, slightly, just because the budgets were tight, we can't fund everything that we want to. So that's why this process is great, because we can use funds that weren't used to kind of fund us at the end of the day, rather than try to fund for every contingency. It's, it's just a process we've been using the past few years when, you know, budgeting has been very tight.
Okay, so, you know, fortunately, solid waste and waste disposal bailed us out this year. But if it doesn't next year, then, you know, we may face some interesting challenges, right?
Yes, we, you know, there could be a time where we would not pay, you know, we would not use our legal budget, not use legal. I wouldn't, I never want to do that because that puts us in a terrible situation. We generally do have open positions here and there throughout the year. So there's sometimes a salary savings if there's a vacancy in a position. Are there other accounts that, we generally budget very closely?
Yes.
To most items. This, this year is very different because we budgeted what we thought for solid waste and recycling. We saw that 15% to 17% decrease in our solid waste disposal. So we saved on tipping fees in that sense. So this year, we really, we saw that windfall.
Dan, just, just for people, you know, members of the public who might be watching, so we go through this process every year. Can you just give a little snapshot, just what the sources of funds have been in other years? It's unusual that all the sources of funds is all one big underspent account. We typically do it a different way.
Exactly. So normally, we pull from several budgets. We've used debt service in the past because, you know, we, we haven't, like, received a fire vehicle, for instance. So there are funds available there. We've had surpluses in health insurance in the past before the, the trust was created. So that was the place that we were able to pull from. We have used personal services for, you know, inter-department transfers and whatnot. So basically, we can find wherever there will be a closeout, and we can utilize those funds. So, you know, there's at least, you know, a few hundred thousand dollars each year that's available to do this, which is why the process works, because we don't know 18 months in advance what's going to be short, but we know something will, will move and work its way out.
Okay. Thanks, Dan. That's terrifying.
Okay. Anybody else from the Finance Committee? I'm not seeing anything. Tom, do you want me to...
Christina, maybe I'll just ask, could I go ahead and ask people in the room and people online?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And then come back to you?
Absolutely. Go ahead.
Thank you, Christina. Anybody here, members of the public that have a question about these budget transfer items we've been discussing? Okay, I don't see anything, anything online?
I don't see anything online right now.
Okay. Thank you, Christina. Back to you.
Hey, Tom.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Sean.
Yeah. So it looks like, I was looking at the legal services, and it looks like the labor side went up pretty substantially. Is that, is that really because there was a bunch of contracts settling this year?
No, it was really, there was employee matters that we had to handle that weren't unexpected.
Okay. All right, got it. Okay. Thanks, Sean. Okay. Back to you, Christina.
Okay, so if the Finance Committee doesn't have an objection, I will ask for a vote to approve the whole slate.
Make a motion to approve the whole slate.
Seconded.
Thank you. And by roll call, all in favor, Nate?
Aye.
Shelby?
Aye.
Beth?
Aye.
John Friar?
Aye.
Ari Vetsa?
Aye.
John Lefers?
Aye.
Dennis?
Aye.
And I'm an aye, so that passes unanimously.
Thank you. And I'll accept the motion to approve the requests for budget transfers as listed in the agenda.
So just, and do a roll call, just because the FinCon is doing a joint meeting with us.
Okay, sure. So I, I hear the motion. And a second. And second, okay. Chris?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Noel?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
And I'm also an aye. Great. Thank you, Christine. Your committee's very welcome to stay for the update from the communications consultant. But should you wish to adjourn?
I think we can adjourn, but if, well, let me ask you, are you guys, I, I will probably stay, but I can be demoted to just an attendee.
No one's demoting, no one's demoting you, Christina.
All right. Then I will call for an adjournment from, from our committee. Any, can somebody make the motion? In second. Okay. Nate?
Second.
Shelby? Beth? John Friar?
Aye.
John Lefers?
Aye.
Dennis?
Aye.
Okay, we're out. Thank you.
Thanks, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, up next, there's a $740 item, which is an update from our Communications Consultant, Capital Strategic Solutions. And I see we're welcoming Liz and Nicole. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for having us here this evening.
Thank you. I'm having issues with my camera. I don't know where it's going, but hopefully I'll pop up soon. Thanks for us.
Great. So we have had Capital Strategic Solutions on board since January of 2025 to prepare a communications strategy for the Town of Westford, as well as prepare and provide communication support through December of 2026. I believe Capital Strategic Solutions was before this board in February of 2025 to gather feedback of what we wanted to see moving forward. We've received some public feedback, and now they're here to kind of give their six-month update to you. It's a little bit short of six months, but we're getting ready to issue the communications plan. We're training staff. We have some metrics to provide related to our communications, and we'd welcome Nicole and Liz to give the presentation and then have questions and answers at the end. Or Nicole and Liz, you can determine if you want us to interrupt you as we go, or how you'd like that to interact.
So I welcome any comments as we go. I think it might be easier that way, just to address them while we're on the screen instead of rewinding back to them.
Great. We'll let you go.
Okay, if we could move to the next slide, please. So I'm Nicole Figurito. I am the Project Principal, as well as the CEO for Capital Strategic Solutions. I have a 20-year career span in communications in the municipal government. And I'll let Liz introduce herself.
Hi, I'm Liz Clagian. I've been working with the Town of Westford as the project lead. I'm also a project manager at Capital Strategic Solutions, and I have a large background working with municipalities all over Massachusetts, doing their communications and acting as their PIO.
Next slide, please. So as you know, when we put together our proposal, we put together our phased approach to the communications. Phase one was developing the comprehensive communications plan, doing an assessment. Phase two included the communication support services. And phase three was for the additional support services, as well as special projects and the coordination of the annual report. I apologize if I'm moving quickly, so you can pause me at any time. I do speak very fast. I'm not going to go deep diving into this because we've outlined it in the other slides as well. So next slide, please. So in phase one, we completed the baseline assessment. We met with a lot of the teams. We reviewed a lot of your platforms. We did a SWOT analysis of, you know, how things were, your communications were flowing, and we really enjoyed ourselves getting to know Westford and getting to know the community, as well as your department staff, and learning more about the challenges and the opportunities ahead. We also developed a multi-channel communications plan, which is currently under review. We've proposed some strategies for fostering two-way communications and recommended tools, such as Canva, some of the survey tools that were used or were implemented previously through the Zen City function platform, excuse me. And we've implemented and we're evaluating, you know, the process with your team, and we're really enjoying that part of it, teaching them how to work the plan, best management practices, as well as tools and ways to track and share their results. Next slide, please.
Sure. I hesitate to break in, but on that previous slide, since you offered to take some questions, you say you outline strategies for various communication platforms. Can you just give a little bit more color on what that really means?
Sure. We met with each of the departments, and we walked them through, not too long ago, we walked them through the process of using Canva for the various platforms. We talked them through how to post on the website, as well as on social media, to get them up to speed on ADA compliance as well. I'm going to allow Liz to elaborate a little bit further because she's been working closely with the departments.
Yeah, so we did, we held a training, and we talked about Canva specifically. We're actually holding another training for Canva to go more in-depth for those that are going to be specifically creating content for their departments. But we also created like a step-by-step guide on like how to post on a newsflash. It may look easy, but it's not that easy. Civic Plus is kind of counterintuitive. So we've been teaching staff how to do newsflash. We've also been teaching staff about using Deliverit, which is our scheduling platform for social media. Also, for the other strategies for the different platforms, it's more so like frequency that we're posting on social media, best media practices, you know, for the different social media platforms that Westford has.
You know, so just to add to Liz and Nicole, we've also been training and putting in the plan of, when do we put something as a newsflash? When do we put something on social media, say Facebook or Twitter? When do we use LinkedIn? Because those all have different audiences, so that is part of those platforms as well, and strategies of what type of post goes onto what type of platform.
Okay. And I may have one more question? Sure, thanks. So you have proposed strategies for fostering two-way communication with residents. Can you provide a little bit more detail on that effort?
So we've basically been, we're encouraging, obviously, so far surveys and posting on newsflash, basically promoting any kind of upcoming events that are happening. So fostering that two-way communication, but also fostering communication for residents on Facebook and Twitter, LinkedIn, for people mostly to make sure that they're, we're resharing across platforms, across departments, and then encouraging that two-way communication. And just making sure that people are aware of the different things that we have going on in town, the different resources available to them. And that's kind of how we're fostering that two-way communication, allowing people to know, hey, we're posting on our, like, our content calendar weekly. We create a social media content calendar for Westford every month, and we have all these different, like, call-to-action to like kind of find out, hey, like, learn more about, you know, Westford's resources for economic development, or a bunch of different departments and stuff like that. So that's kind of how we're trying to gauge interest from residents and really foster that two-way communication.
We're also sharing information, like, if they needed to get in touch with someone, how they can get in touch with them. Like, for instance, with the, we were assisting with the initial outreach for the Boston Road project with the engineering team, and just making sure that there was a loop for residents to provide feedback and phone numbers, and make sure those were published somewhere in ways that we're not kind of feeding them information on an avalanche-type of scale. So we're providing the appropriate platforms for the appropriate information.
Okay, thank you.
Next slide.
Good job.
I have a question about two-way communications. Is that limited to a certain level, as far as two-way communications and what type of communications that might be? I'm worried about somebody getting into a dialogue on Facebook with these various interest groups, and just how do we manage that?
So I think that you pick and choose your conversations based on whether it's a legitimate question or whether it's a comment. You're not going to always please everyone when you're posting information. It's not the role of a public information officer to engage in those types of activities, having been a public information officer. It's important to inform the community about things that are happening, and regardless of how you feel about that personally, you take that out. They need the information to make an informed decision on their behalf. If it's a legitimate question, then it's extremely, you know, welcoming to go in and answer those questions on a social media platform. It's actually encouraged. Does that answer your question?
Well, I think it does. Just I see the different use of social media at different levels of government, and I'm concerned about just, you know, how that's handled as far as the official position, official information, reliable information, and then how are you sure that it is the reliable information that's coming from the right resources, the right sources?
Okay, I'm not sure if Nicole and Liz are going to cover this later, but maybe we could come back. If it's not covered, like, what exactly, what does the training look like? What guidance do we give on how to engage and when to engage? Sort of, it was a major issue for us, how do we react to social media, particularly in our last budget cycle? We had a lot of questions and a lot of misinformation, and we were, we needed better training on when we engaged and when we stood back. So maybe we can tag that.
So are we looking at that as a purview from an elected official, or are we looking at the purview of a public employee, is my question back?
I mean, it could be either. I think that our strategy was, well, the short answer is it could be either, and I think that's part of the problem, is that we didn't have a clear strategy. Should one of us, as the elected officers, take lead on correcting misinformation? Is that something that we should, you know, ask people on staff to be leading on? So I think we, at some point during the effort, either already done or to come in this program, I think that's an important need to address. Sort of, we could walk through what happened last time and sort of do a little simulation and say, okay, if this happened again, who would be the right people to engage? How would they engage? What's the limit where they should stop engaging? I think it was just a big, it was a big deal, and I think we, none of us felt like we handled it well, or knew what excellence looked like, basically.
What's offer, can I offer a specific example, just to frame this?
Sure.
So let's say a resident posts something on Facebook related to the budget, which may not have factual information in it, or maybe it's not as clearly worded as it could be. At that point, to Tom's question, is it the responsibility of a select board member that might be on Facebook to jump in and refute that, or try to clarify that post? Is it the responsibility of town staff to do that? What would be your recommendations on how we try to, you know, frame our response in the most appropriate way with that type of posting that you see out there?
So as a PIO, I look at that as, you know, as the responsibility of the town staff to take that on with direction from administration. That's something that I would escalate up. I would format the response, escalate it up, and get an approval for, and then publish it.
I think we also need to decipher, is this an official Town of Westford page that this person is posting on, or is it like Westford Friends, which I don't think we have, we would want to be posting on those private pages. So I would look for Nicole and Liz to write that into our guidelines, moving forward of what is the best practice on that.
Yeah, I don't think we should workshop the strategy right now. It's more a question, are we going to cover, will there be a deliverable workshop guide that helps us address this really important issue? Either it's work you've already done, or it's work that's on the timeline ahead.
So we do have, as part of the communications plan, and I think it's further down, an emergency communications training that will address a crisis, but we could add, fold that in there as well. And we're more than welcome, more than happy to come and sit with the administration, the select board, and other board members that would like us to, to come in and do that training as well with you. I wholeheartedly agree that if it's an outside page, it's a friends of, or it's an exclusive private page, it's not the town's place to jump into those private pages, because then it becomes unmanageable. I've seen it happen in other communities. I do not recommend that.
Okay, thanks. As long as that sort of work module is out there in our future, I think that's great.
Yes.
I think we just should have a policy that echoes that. Something in this comes out of this says, this is how we respond, and do not respond.
Understood.
At what levels, who does it?
Yeah.
Somebody comes up with some real question about the budget, we can respond in a general way to everybody that this is the real budget, and not even address this role, whatever kind of correspondence it is.
I can work with Nicole and Liz to fold that into the plan.
Okay, thanks, Sean. Important point. Noel?
Could you explain more about the plan outreach programs? What sort of programs that you're planning to increase participation in town events?
Are we on slide one, or on phase one, or phase two?
So as far as planned outreach programs to include participation in town events, as soon as an event comes our way, we'll work with that department or that staff member to plan, you know, the outreach for that event, give them insights, and tips, and guides on how they should plan that event. It's part of the step-by-step process.
And an example of that is the bike rodeo that occurred last week. We had, certain departments wanted to put up posts. We sent it all to CSS. They packaged it all together and put it out on our key accounts for that. Did you have another question related to that?
Okay. All right, thanks. So let's hop back into the presentation.
That's okay. Slide two, thank you. So we're in, we're in phase two right now, where Liz is providing comprehensive communication support, where we're looking at everything that we're putting out there, and we're drafting up some analytics, and we're making some internal recommendations on our posting. Once the staff gets really up to speed on how to post and what to do, I think Liz is assisting some of them as well, giving them some guidance on how to post and what they need to do. We're performing performance analysis and capacity building, looking for ways to continue to build your communication structure, build your followings, and things of that nature. And we're keeping in constant communication with the town on everything that we do, and I'm going to let Liz talk to this a little bit further in more detail.
So I meet with Kristin and Mike, and like, we always say, there's so many Mikes. So Kristin and Mike, and like, on a bi-weekly.
Mike Wells, our IT director.
Yeah, sorry, IT director. So I meet with them bi-weekly, but I'm typically in communication with them every single day during the week. And if something were to rise to the occasion, say on a weekend, they could just give me a call. They know how to reach me, and they also know if I'm unavailable, who to go to next on our team, Nicole, and then our Mike or Clara. And so we have a really good, close kind of relationship there, where we're able to kind of, I'm in the know with what's going on with Kristin and Mike. Usually, throughout the week, Kristin's really good at messaging back and forth, letting us know the updates and upcoming events that we're going to be needing to do an announcement on, or a newsflash on. So we're typically in communication, like I said, all the time.
Okay, thanks, Liz.
Any questions?
There is a question from a member of the public.
Sure.
Sure.
Yeah, so Christina Green writes, is all the communication with residents via social media, did CSS investigate other means of communication?
Well, we do printed communications flyers. Like you said, we'll put out the newsflashes on our surveys and things like that. But we're, I think we had worked with Nicole Aviolette to talk about ways where she could put out a mailer, and we helped her in kind of figuring out what goes on it, and if there are resources and things of that nature. But we're aware of the kind of, the older population in town, and where there needs to be ways for this communication to be in, like, hard copy versus online. So we've made recommendations when we first met with all the different departments about different ways we can hold different trainings for, you know, the older folks to kind of like learn how to use certain things on social media, or other than that, we can just do print or hard copy, especially like the Town Manager's Newsletter. We also do, we created these job flyers for different job postings that I know are distributed at different town buildings. So it's not just social media.
Thanks, I see, Sean, I see that. Sean, go ahead.
Related to the newsletter, the Town Manager's Newsletter, was there any thought put into how residents subscribe to these things? I just, not to point out any one aspect, but I think that the process of signing up to receive emails in this town is particularly cumbersome, but I'm just curious if there was some thought put into that.
So the newsflash, the Town Manager's Newsletter goes on newsflash, and certain people sign up for notify me alerts for different categories on the website. So I, we'll get to this, but there are about 850 people that are signed up for the newsflash subscriber list, which they receive the emails that way. As for creating a different category with the newsletter of the, for the Town Manager's Newsletter, it's definitely a possibility that we could do something like that. Does that answer your question?
I guess what I'm confused about- I guess what I'm confused about is, are you suggesting that this news flash that we use with a channel, that would be something different than what we're currently doing to encourage people to get emails that way?
So it's one, it's one section of the website that you can sign up for. You can sign up for different sections to be notified about certain things. I'm just saying it's possible we could create a different category on the website to have it just be for the newsletter and have it go out that way. That's a possibility.
So the newsletter is accessed by the notify me.
Yep.
It has a place on the homepage, has a place on the town manager page. It goes to Facebook, Twitter and LinkedIn. And then there's also printed copies available throughout the town. So those are the ways that we currently issue the town manager newsletter. Are you suggesting that we think of other ways to distribute the town manager newsletter?
Not distribution, but how you just sign up for it.
How you get people to sign up.
Yeah.
So the signup right now is through Civic Plus. So CSS has nothing to do with that. That is our online website platform. We could try to do a training with residents on how do you sign up for these news flashes? We could think of another way. I know CSS has been using their, I'm going to blank on it and I'm going to see it in a future slide, your constant contact.
Yes.
You do have a constant contact list that they use. It may reach some residents. It also reaches outside entities as well.
Got it.
So is that what you're getting to?
Yeah.
Is there another way for residents to receive Town of Westford information?
You've got it. So not, not focused on the distribution, but just signing up to get, again, I was trying to sign up to receive an email and it wasn't particularly easy or accessible on the.
On the website. So the website platform.
Sure.
Okay.
But why don't we take Valerie? And if people have comments, they're addressed in more detail in later slide, why don't we let these folks walk through the presentation? Valerie?
Would you rather continue?
Well, please, since you're here, why don't you go ahead? But I just want to make sure we get through the, the only half of this, but I just wanted to cover it.
Yep. The reason I stood up was, so Valerie, I'm former and drive, the reason I stood up was it was very relevant to Christina's question and then almost redundant to what's been said. But I look at, and I say this without knowing the details of the RFS that originally started the CSS services. But for me, like the work of training staff on Canva and working on how to get these great looking posts and building the campaign for town meeting, it's still on Facebook. And it's reaching, I think our subscribers on Facebook is 4,000 something, maybe not all of them are residents. As Liz said, the main news feed goes to, as of September 2024, anyway, it was 841 subscribers. And the town manager newsletter could be beautiful, but if only 840 people in town are reading it, it reminds me of a lot of work that we did in 2022 with the access to town meeting group. We had a survey out, again, 775 responses, but 60% of those people said that they learn about stuff from word of mouth. And 70% of them were already on Facebook and 36% of them got information from yard signs. So I'd be really interested to see how can we, and I know everyone's played this call, so we have this opportunity of expanding our capacity, our staff capacity, to make a mark that builds like that subscriber list or like reaches residents where they are and grows the people who are getting their information from word of mouth or yard signs, standing outside market basket and saying, are you subscribed to the town manager newsletter? Did you know one exists? Here's how to subscribe. Or like an iPad, I don't know, subscribe right now. That's kind of how I see this could be a legacy to build so that later somebody else can build the Canva thing, but more people are receiving it. So that's just my opinion.
Yeah, I think we'll come back to that question of like, how do we know when we're done? How do we target that? So, okay, thanks, thanks Nicole and Liz for your patience. Why don't we, why don't we move through this presentation and people collect their questions and we'll come back. I just want to make sure we get through all the stuff they've already prepared before we, you know, stop with more questions.
Sure. So why don't we go to the next slide, phase three? So we have not obviously started our second year of communication support and we have not had any special projects assigned to our team yet. Liz, I'm going to let you speak to the annual report coordination and publication.
Yes, so I've met with Pam McNiff, who put together and was part of putting together the town report from last year. So this year we have created a template for departments to submit content to really streamline and like just make it very cohesive for moving forward for year, future years. And we have actually given that to the town manager's office for review. So they're reviewing currently just to make it a lot easier for the process. We also plan on reaching out, I know it's really, sounds really soon, but we're planning on reaching out mid-July just to kind of get the ball rolling with the whole process so that we're not getting it out too late. And I know that that's been maybe a little bit of a struggle in years in the past. So that's our plan for the annual report.
Next slide, please. So anyone who knows me knows that I love numbers and I think numbers tell a story. I also think metrics, you know, that combined with what's happened and what's gone on in the last, you know, in that timeframe, really painted a strong picture. We've been working with Civic Plus and Mike Wells's team to kind of get more concise metrics based on the webpage hits. Just from the last month, month of May, May 1st to June 1st, we had over 98,000 page, excuse me, 98,000 page views. Of those page views, 28,000 were unique. The news map, news flash metrics have jumped, you know, month over month since we've been on board and we're reaching approximately 21,000 or we did in the month of May. So I'm looking forward to what happens in June. Liz, can you add some more information here about the metrics for the website?
So I think, I think what's really great is that we're, with the trainings that we're having and the kind of step-by-step process of instructions really on how to post a news flash, because you know, a lot of the time you get a news flash, there's no picture there or it's not like ADA compliant. You can't read it, you can't click on it, you can't expand it. So a lot of what we're doing is we're really trying to empower with our trainings, empower staff members to feel confident in posting news flashes, again, posting social media. But the news flash goes hand in hand with social media. So, you know, not seeing that RSS button come up and like, you know, having that briefcase be posted, we're really trying to, to, to make it so we're getting these really good stories, upcoming events, alerts, you know, even just like road construction detours. We're trying to get everything out there so that people are aware of what's going on. And it really does show in the metrics that we've really boosted how many news flashes are going out and really kind, I'm hoping that we're empowering staff members to put out their own, feel confident and comfortable in putting out their own news flashes and our updates for their departments.
Next slide, please. So like I said earlier, I love numbers and metrics tell a story. We've had some great, we have some great numbers here and you may be wondering what happened in March to make that hit so, so high on your Facebook algorithm and that's, we had the town meeting happening. We had the town manager's launch of their new newsletter. We also had that coupled with the unfortunate circumstance of a missing persons post, which boosted that metric really high. In the following months, you'll see that they dipped a little bit lower, which is to be expected from time to time based on how we're posting, what we're posting and what's happening at the current moment. So in April, there were posts about the power outage causing a stir. There was a second issue of the town manager's newsletter as well as the kickoff of the Boston Road Rehabilitation Project, which gained a lot of traffic to the Facebook site. We always try to use a push-pull method from your social media accounts back to your website so that there's traffic constantly flowing between the two, which elevates your online algorithms. In May, we had a bit slower month, typical traffic alerts, night closure on Littleton Road. Over the summer months with families traveling and people less engaged with what's happening in their communities, we expect it to be either, you know, a status quo unless something catastrophic happens or a major event happens. Any, next slide. Liz, you want to add anything?
I just wanted to say, Facebook is still the, I'm sorry, we're on LinkedIn, but, but the Facebook metrics, I just want to say are the most widely used platform for Westford. Like, I'm sorry, I don't remember her name, but she was saying that, that is one of the biggest followings that we have, not only for Westford's Facebook, but for also the police and fire departments' Facebook pages. And we've like, again, we've really been encouraging crossposting on these pages and that is really helpful to apartment from department to really get that algorithm up and have people in traffic drive back to Westford's Civic Plus page and having people see more of the updates going out. So Facebook still remains widely the most used platform in Westford.
Next slide, please. So due to the magic that Liz and Kristen worked, we were finally able to gain access to the town's LinkedIn page in February, which allowed us to really boost that algorithm on LinkedIn by really getting the posts going, updating the profile, doing a number of posts outwards and having, we had a good number of reposts. LinkedIn did change their algorithm earlier this, well, early this year. And we're kind of working with the algorithm right now to increase visibility. We are also recommending that staff members, community stakeholders, who, you know, fellow professionals, share the posts as well. Liz, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, we've recommended, so different, any other different staff members, department heads in Westford, sharing these posts, networking. LinkedIn is a networking professional platform. So we want to use this strategically for job postings, you know, a job well done. We did use it for the AAA rating in town, bond rating in town. So those things get really, like a lot of visibility on, on LinkedIn because that's where the audience is. So we really want to be strategic moving forward in what we're putting on there. And again, like Nicole had said, we want to make sure that the stakeholders and other department heads, other employees, staff members in town are using it. Like I said, job postings are really important to repost those. Sharing is caring. That's what we say all the time. That's what makes people come back to your site. They remember, you know, they saw your post, they know you work there, it's a great place to work. So it's kind of how we want to envision people using LinkedIn moving forward. Next slide.
So media and metrics, I'm going to allow Liz to speak to this slide.
Yes, so this, this is from our, like, I'm not sure if anyone's really familiar, but we have a constant contact, which is, it's a platform used for email marketing. And we are, we're letting, we're sending out Westford's communications to local media, Boston TV stations, all the different ones that we have on our distribution list. And it's, it seems to be going really well. We don't use it a whole lot, only, I say don't ever send out a press release unless we are really trying to get the press's attention because we don't want to inundate them with stuff that may not be press-worthy or newsworthy in their, in their eyes. I know that Westford Cat does cover everything, a lot of what goes out, but they also see a lot of the other things that we send out and are connected to the news flash. But, so we do have a really good loyal media base. We haven't had like any unsubscribes. I personally have gone through this list and added, I used to work in the media and different, two different TV stations in Boston. So I personally added a lot of personal contacts who really appreciate getting the information that we're sending out. So we are retaining a lot of good contacts and again, we're using this strategically as well.
Next slide, thank you. Oh, that's it. Does anyone have any questions?
Yeah, Chris.
So thank you so much for the presentation and the update on what you've been doing and where you might be heading in the future. My biggest concern is when I look at this, I see a lot of focus on improving our existing capabilities, but not necessarily doing anything to improve our outreach to new, through new platforms and trying to reach new segments of our residents' population. You know, people who don't use Facebook and, you know, aren't looking for a job with the Town of Westford may never look at LinkedIn. So how do you guys plan on, on making or improving our visibility in other social media platforms and the outside of social media just in general to residents who don't actually use social media?
Well, I can speak to the other platforms. We are actually holding a meeting with the Recreation Department and the Health Department on Friday because both of those departments are, requested to create Instagram accounts for the town. So we will be using a different platform that there, other than that, I don't believe there's any other Instagram accounts that are currently active in Westford or official Westford Instagram accounts. So we will be branching out on Instagram to that different audience. I don't recommend TikTok or Snapchat just because of the records retention law. But, and for TikTok, I'm, you know, there are other reasons for that one. But I'll let Nicole talk to the other outreach strategies and different platforms that we could potentially work on, work on getting started.
Sure, thank you, Liz. Like Liz said, that we, we've looked at Instagram, we've had discussions about Instagram. And honestly, until Liz and Kristen got together, there wasn't a LinkedIn or a professional platform to reach out on their professionally, to really highlight your employees for a job well done. I also encourage your employ, your employees, your employees are your greatest asset. They're the ones that talk to people every day, is really getting them involved in the communications. So getting them signed up for everything that the town is putting out because they carry that information. When I worked for the Town of Framingham and when I worked for Pinellas County Utilities and through the communities that we support, we, we understood that our employees were our greatest asset in sharing this information, especially in the days where now there's no local, local newspaper coverage, you know, where a lot of communities are dealing with that. So you're becoming your own news source. And that's what we're trying to do through a news flash is use that as your news source so that you have that layered approach. Also using your push-pull algorithm, building up that online algorithm will allow Westford to be more visible than it ever was. We use this method when we worked with the Town of Plainville when they had elevated levels of TTHM and HAA5, as well as when they were installing a new or talking about a new water treatment plant to educate residents on that plant and what, what the aspects were and how it impacted their water. So we use a lot of different tools on the backend that people aren't necessarily seeing. I also recommend that if it's something, and I've had this discussion before with a few of the departments, that if it's something that the town is interested in to really get it in front of stakeholders down the road, if it's a really high priority project or something, mail, stale mail works, you know, a five-by-seven postcard with a graphic image with information, a QR code or a link back to the town's site. What you want is, you want Westford to be the place that they go to find their information or the westford MA.gov site to be where they're going to get their information, that you are the, you are the source. It's not a blogger, it's not another Facebook outlet, it's the town, you're the official voice.
One thing that I would love to see as part of this is, so I can see from a lot of the work that you've done, that you're building a lot of skills within the staff, which is great. It looks like a lot of the metrics are kind of seasonal, but maybe going up in a, in a way that's good. If our strategic goal as a town is to be sort of the most engaged town of any town like us, I would love, to your love of metrics, Nicole, I would love to have a sense of what best practice is. Like what does excellence look like? Like we, we have a certain amount of engagement, like I would just love to understand, because if we're going to justify funding in the future, I would like to understand, are we, are we at best practice? Are we better than best practice? Are other towns finding a lot of success with, you know, standing out in front of market basket, handing out flyers? What, there's 360 towns and cities doing experiments all the time. What are the best of those and how do we, how do we pull that together into like a target setting plan?
So we are pulling that together as we're, we're working with your staff members. And like you said, there's, you know, there's a lot of different communities out there and a lot of them have best management practices, but each community is unique and the way that they communicate is unique. So we pick pieces of each one and we pull that together and make sure that your, your community is first receiving the information and has a way to get in touch with your departments. It's through this. way to get in touch with your departments. It's through the staff trainings and closing those end loops. That's a critical piece that a lot of people miss out on is not only sharing the information, but listening to what the community, your community is saying and close back, close out those feedback loops. We did a lot of this in the communities that I've worked in where we, you know, we made sure that if somebody called into a town department, that they got a call back and it was notated somewhere that that person was called back. Or if they posted something, you know, emailed, that that email loop was closed out. To me, that's communication with excellence, is bringing that information out there so that they're engaged enough. And, and at times, there's, there are going to be posts where you're going to hear negativity from the community about something that's happening, but you know that they're actually engaged. They're actually seeing it. They're responding and they're working with it. To me, that's very telling of a community.
Yeah. So all that sounds good. And this is just a request for some future meeting, not to be answered now necessarily, but just to pick one number. So I think if I look at 830 newsletter recipients or something, that didn't seem very high. But I also don't know what best practice is for towns like us. Like if, if, if whatever percent of the, of the residents, of the adult residents that is, is that good? Is that bad? Like, so I'd love it for, for the key things that you've seen the most effective communicating, if we could set a target for each one, so we can say really, really good towns have a 15% engagement in, you know, of adults over the age of 18 in the newsletter. And really, really good towns see this number of web hits per thousand residents and we're ahead of it or behind it. Like, this is very helpful. Skills building is very helpful. We've already committed this money. If we're going to commit any more money in the future, it's going to have to be against a target.
Yeah, and I think we're building that, those targets out in our strategic plan as well. So one of our strategy areas is more communication to the public. So we want to work with CSS and the board and others to set those targets and then measure them on a quarterly, yearly outward basis. So we're committed to definitely doing that.
So let me ask this, aside from this target setting and then what John and Chris brought up, this idea of making sure our standard operating procedures around public interaction with big hairy complex issues like budget, are there other sort of main feedback categories we'd like to give these guys to incorporate into their work plan? Or it can also just be spot comments or questions, too?
Well, I didn't, I didn't really feel, sorry, I jumped. But I didn't feel like I got an answer to how we're engaging people that are not necessarily on these mainstream social media platforms, other than I think the comment was sending postcards. That isn't very practical, right, on a, on a repeatable basis. So I really need to hear more information about how we're, how we're going to do that. You mentioned Instagram, but it sounded like it was us reaching out to you saying we wanted to start some Instagram accounts rather than you coming to us saying, we think you need to be on Instagram for these reasons. This is how we're going to get you to X number of subscribers. And to Tom's point, you know, for a town our size, how many subscribers should we be having on Facebook or Instagram or some of these other social media accounts to deserve it? Are we in doing well or not? And if not, how do we do better? So these are some of the metrics, I think, that we're looking for and some strategic guidance on how we're going to get there and how we're going to see that engagement grow. Because I'm not hearing that right now in a meaningful way. I think what we're doing is not bad, but I don't see the big incremental gains that we may need, we definitely need to make in order to engage more fully our population.
So if I may, let's add to this target-setting block, best practices that people see in engagement outside of social media. Is that, does that capture?
Or even looking at, there's lots of other forms of social media. I think I've seen in some presentations, you know, is blue sky being considered if that's, you know, one of them. You mentioned TikTok. I understand why you're saying that's not a good one. But I, you know, there's the Asian population that may be looking at some other social media platform that I don't even know about, that hopefully you do know, and maybe that's how we need to be engaging that population or that segment of the population. Things of that nature is what I'm really curious about.
Okay. So target setting, what are the different approaches to engagement that, that seem to work? We're already doing a bunch of them. Are some that we should add? Noel?
Going off of what Sean said about it being difficult to sign up for the newsletter on the website and maybe not taking an iPad to Market Basket, but one way that we do constantly have an interaction with all the taxpayers in town is their tax bills or their dog licenses. So maybe having, you know, people to do it online, have it already clicked, yes, I want to receive the newsletter, or they have to unclick it to say, no, I don't want to get the newsletter.
QR code and email.
Yeah, you know, some way like that.
Well, and I think that's kind of how we do things in the schools right now, right? Like when you go in and you register your student, they take your email and then magically you get emails from Superintendent Chu every so often, you know. So I, I think it's, there are ways of doing that. And I think, one thing that I keep hearing from the last three speakers was that we need to be thinking not just the quality and how we're distributing information, but how do we increase the pool that we're distributing to, right? And I hope that there's thought to that, too. So I would, and I appreciate the presentation. I think it's, it's great. But that would be my one suggestion going forward is that we're thinking about how do we increase that pool beyond social media outlets, which I think Tom captured, too.
Okay. One more of them go to the public. Yeah, appreciate that. So you, you talked a lot about using LinkedIn as a way to, I presume, to engage our public, meaning the residents of Westford. I'm not exactly clear how you see that happening from town employees, I guess, putting posts in their LinkedIn account. So maybe you could briefly talk about that. And second to that is, are you working with the entirety of the in-town's employment, i.e. the schools, which has the lion's share of our employees, or are you just focusing on like town hall-related employees in this effort?
So I'll take that because I don't want them to be uncomfortable about that. So they are primarily working with town employees. We have had conversations with Dr. Chu and his staff, but it's not, it's not bleeding into all of the schools. We, we didn't have that in the entire budget or the scope. So it was really the high-level administration section for that communications.
And so can we, tell me how LinkedIn is helping engage our residents?
Yeah, I'll let, I'll obviously let them answer for LinkedIn, but I know from my perspective, if someone, something is put up on a LinkedIn for the town of Westford page, I always reshare it on my personal LinkedIn page. And then my colleagues who are, I'll call them connections with me, can see that and see what the town of Westford is doing. And I can tell you that, you know, I was at a professional conference two weeks ago and everyone was referencing, oh, wow, you're doing that, you're doing that, you're looking for this job. So they are looking at that from a professional standpoint. I don't know, Liz and Nicole, if you want to increase that. We have not really trained our employees to keep sharing things on LinkedIn because I think a lot do not use that platform right now, but we're going to be doing that in the future for training.
So LinkedIn is more or less like, across the, across the Commonwealth as well as across the nation, there's a shortage of public employees. And one of the things that we're, we're consistently doing is, with our clients, is talking to them about using their professional platforms to highlight the employees, to highlight the jobs well done, to highlight the opportunities that are available and highlight what you're doing in your community. Because when you're showing a light of highlighting these activities, it makes it more attractive for someone to go into public service. I think that there's, so we've had a lot of success with other communities with LinkedIn and getting employees, getting positions filled, getting employees to learn more about a community and why they should go there. Especially, you know, a lot of people didn't talk about like their public works employees or how they were going to get someone into those roles. Now, we work with a number of communities that are struggling to find assistant DPW directors as well as DPW directors, water operators, and that's a lot of the people that we network with on these platforms as well as other platforms who you might engage with. Like when I share a post from LinkedIn on my platform, I'm also part of New England Water Works, AWPA, and a lot of different organizations that highlight that role, that open position. And if they're already seeing something positive posted about that employer, it may incite that person to apply for that role or that job. It is also a great way for your administration to share things that you're doing in your community so that you're spotlighted as a community where things are happening in a very positive light. So you're networking with your colleagues on LinkedIn. We have talked about going on, the town having an Instagram account. We're still working through those details behind the scenes. It's something that, we have had those conversations. As far as using other tools to reach out, we are open to, you know, researching, you know, the, the signups on the tax bills. I can tell you that most of, I'll, I'll tell you from my point of view, my tax bill goes to my mortgage company. A lot of homeowners who have mortgages, they don't see their tax bills. Excuse me. Maybe it's just me and I just don't, because it's my mortgage company gets it, so I'm not worried about it. I would offer maybe a water bill might be a little bit more accessible to get that information on, if we could post those on there, as well as, you know, maybe using QR codes around town hall on posters and links on posters down at the senior center. Again, we're leaving printed flyers down there and getting involved in your community centers, like your Parks and Recs Department and things of that nature and getting posters put up there and little postcards placed different locations around town where people could pick one up and say, okay, this is where I could subscribe to this. There are a lot of different ways you can communicate, which is why we've, we're starting off with the basics here. We're still in the process, but it will eventually grow. I'm, I'm all about a layered approach because you're going, there's so many different platforms. You could expend hours trying to research every single one of them and get a post on every single one, but then you're, again, spending a lot of time managing those platforms as well.
And I think the one point is our renters don't necessarily get a water bill or a tax bill either. So we're working with CSS. How do we get to our renters? They may be rotating through apartments. They may only be here for a short stint. They may not have children in the school system. So that's one of the areas that I'm really focused on, is getting to those populations that are not homeowners as well.
That's a great point. Okay. So I think you've heard the key feedback from the board. Anything from the public? Anything else from the public we want to make sure that we, we hear and add to this work plan? See anything online?
I don't see anything online, but people are welcome to send an email to my email address, klass@westfordma.gov. PIO@westfordma.gov goes directly to CSS as well. So happy to continue to receive feedback and we'll be refining this and coming back with updates.
Okay. Great. Well, many thanks for this report and all the work you're doing. It's much appreciated and we look forward to seeing you again soon. Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Do we have a next sort of six months from now?
I would say four to six months. If there's something else, you know, we, we have the communications plan ready. We want to present it to, I think we would do sooner.
It'll probably come up when we do the strategic. So, you know, we're based on the feedback you guys gave, we're going to try to spotlight different strategic areas as we go through the year and communications is one of the top ones. So.
And you will get the monthly metrics reports. So CSS provides those, so I'll provide those to you on, on a monthly basis.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Nicole and Liz.
Okay. We are now, you are a patient, you have the heart of a saint, Paul. Patient, patient person. Welcome.
We should have bumped him up, but, well.
Or at least don't tell me that you were going to bump me out.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, I mean, now everyone's aware.
Paul Sterrett, town engineer, and according to CSS, you're most valuable asset.
Absolutely. Never doubt. Never doubt.
So this is a follow-up from Annual Town Meeting, who authorized you to enter an order of taking for easements on the Plain Road sidewalk project. The most exciting sidewalk project I've done because this will be the final segment of the longest sidewalk network in the town of Westford. You'll be able to walk for almost two hours on a sidewalk if you walk at my pace. And so these easements have all been agreed upon. We've worked diligently as we are wont to do with all of the abutters and the residents and a lot of hand-holding there, a lot of questions answered, but everyone is satisfied. And we've got a nice little project, but in order to do it, we need these temporary easements so that we can go on to people's property and not worry about their liabilities. So that's, that's the order of taking that you have in front of you.
Any, any questions about what this thing is or any individual questions based on residents?
Just wondering, this is at no cost to the town, right?
This is a, a part of a mitigation agreement that you have with Newport for the construction. That's what we intend to, to use, but we did get an appropriation from Town Meeting in the event that we're not able to use the mitigation. So we backed it up with an appropriation.
I was talking about the easements.
Oh, the easements. Yes, yeah. No, that'll, no, we are, we are offering our residents to sign a waiver of appraisal and damages, which I have extended arguments with Town Council about the name of that document because it always leads people to believe, I'm not waiving my, my rights to damages. And, but we have to explain that it's, you're waiving appraisal damages. The Fifth Amendment provides that the government cannot take people's land without just compensation. And so we are required to, to go to residents if we're going to take their land, even easements, and to get it appraised, have the appraiser come up with some divination of value to whatever temporary or permanent easement we're going to take. And that generally is a very small number. So we've spent all this money hiring and retaining an assessor. I mean, am I, yeah, yeah, appraiser, not an assessor, appraiser. And then we spend all this money, you know, doing that and find out that, well, the stretch of land is worth, you know, a hundred bucks or something for temporary easement. So Town Council years ago, when we did the Main Street Project, recommended that we offer a compensation, a consideration for them to have an attorney look at the appraisal and the, the easements so they can make an informed decision. It was $500, but that was, you know, 10-plus years ago. So it's, we're now offering with your, you, you had previously approved $750 for the residents to participate in this easement.
Okay. And if there are any more questions? Okay. I'll entertain a motion that the board vote to execute an order of taking to acquire easements for the Plain Road sidewalk project between Villanova Drive and Depot Street. All in favor? Unanimous? Thank you, Paul.
Thank you. And Mr. Chair, we also do have another, this is a contract. Yeah.
Do you have the signature page for it?
Sure.
Then to sign this evening?
Yeah, please, please, please do. Please do, Paul.
Yep. So there's a contract, just in, in the event for the Pleasant Street sidewalk, we have that design contract in front of you under the contract approvals. If there were any questions to that, I don't anticipate that there are or will be, but.
Okay. Maybe, Kristen, is that under?
It's under Contract B1. So I don't know if anyone had anticipated any questions on that. If yes, we could have Paul answer those now. If no, we could take it under contract. So I'll let the board decide what they prefer.
Any questions related to that contract for Paul? Otherwise, we can.
Thank you. That's going to be another fun little sidewalk project.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you. Thanks, Paul.
I'll be right here and get my signature.
Okay. It's, it's on its way.
I like your new lights.
My new what?
Your traffic light.
Oh, yes.
You're going to leave there?
Well, we, we, the state paid for them, so if there's a hue and cry to leave them there, then we'll look the other way. We'll, we'll tell them they were stolen.
Thanks, Paul. Eight of five items is old, new business. Kristen, why don't you take us through these first, first couple and then maybe we can talk as a group about the DEI?
Yeah, absolutely. So the first matter is a request to extend the town hall hours pilot program to September 26, 2025, through before the board back in October of 2024, to look at potentially implementing a pilot program to allow for town hall to be open on Tuesday evenings until 6:30 and then close early on Fridays at 1 o'clock. This was not only to be a recruitment and retention item, as many of the other municipalities around us and throughout the Commonwealth, close early on Fridays and stay late open one night a week, but also to allow for our residents and others doing business in the town to access staff after their normal business hours, if those are working nine to five normal schedules. We have surveyed our department heads in town hall. The majority are working that schedule. The majority have seen benefit. The evening hours are generally actually quiet and a lot of busy work can get done and focus work can get done at that point in time. People are enjoying leaving a little bit early to start their weekends on Friday. We've received many people coming to the clerk's office on Tuesday evenings to get marriage licenses, to get married, to go to the assessor's office or the tax collector's office to pay bills and to even process building permits and health permits upstairs. So there has been really no negative feedback to these hours. So I'd like to see how the summer goes and how the staff reacts, as well as how the public reacts, and then potentially revisit this in the fall to be a permanent solution. Since then, we've also had our water department. Since then, we've also had our water department, the forward-facing office employees change their hours to Monday through Thursday, 7:00 AM to 4:30 PM, and Friday, 7:00 AM to 11:00 AM. And that seems to suffice for the water customers who are going in and out to pay bills or are calling with questions. Our water employees who are out in the field and our DPW employees who are out in the field are working normal five days a week, 7:30 to 3:00 or 3:30. Our library hours remain the same. Our council on aging is open one night a week, but general eight to four hours except for Tuesday evenings. And our recreation program is generally eight to four with those extended day program employees working those later hours as well. So again, would welcome any feedback and would request to extend this pilot for additional three months.
Very thorough explanation. Any questions or concerns for Kristen Owens? Okay. Yeah, you already answered all my questions. With that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the extension of the pilot program through September 26th.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Terrific.
The next item is a request to appoint Mike Dennehy to be the Town's Community Emergency Response Coordinator and Andy Sherman as the alternate member for the Greater Lowell Regional Emergency Planning Committee. As you may be aware, Chief Joe Targ, our former police chief, as well as Tim Wickham, our former telecommunications operations manager, were our emergency management co-directors. Tim retired in September of 2024 and Joe retired in December of 2024. I kept Joe on as our sole emergency management director for the months of January through June of 2025 as I wanted Chief Dennehy and Mr. Sherman to get fully acclimated in their new positions of fire chief and telecommunications operations manager. I have appointed them both to be co-director emergency management directors effective July 1st. And as part of their role, they would become the Town's Community Emergency Response Coordinator and the alternate member for the Greater Lowell Regional Emergency Planning Committee. This does require a vote of the select board to move forward.
Sounds like a good strategy and it sounds like we're ready to take this next step. Any, any questions or concerns? Okay. I'll accept the motion to appoint Mike Dennehy to be the Town's Community Emergency Response Coordinator and Andy Sherman as the alternate member for the Greater Lowell Regional Emergency Planning Committee.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. That's unanimous as well. Next one relates to the, the DI committee appointment. And so maybe Kristen and I can just take a step back on a broader question, which is sort of what is the process that we recommend committees use in, in putting out solicitations for people who want to volunteer reviewing those, what typically happens in the meeting? We had met as a select board maybe a year ago and talked about this issue. I think we have to take the hit of not following up on that in an adequate way. I think the intention at the time was to create sort of a simple memorandum that says this is what we recommend good practice to be with regards to, to committee appointments. And maybe we can take a second to just describe verbally what we think that is. Our plan is to follow up with a memo. So we, we acknowledge the criticism and think it is the correct thing for us to follow through and actually say, more or less, this is what the, the select board has evolved to in this way and this is what we recommend. So I'm going to take a shot, Kristen, at describing what we think best practice is and then please, please help me through whatever I missed. So we want to put out a call for volunteers. We want to make sure that, that in the meeting, as part of the meeting packet, all of the people who have submitted volunteer requests are there with whatever information they've provided. We recommend that all the people who are being considered are notified that they're going to be considered in that meeting and that they get, are given an opportunity to speak if they choose in that meeting. And that the, there's a discussion deliberation in the public meeting and a vote taken ultimately around the, sort of who this election might be. We have not had a practice of some rigorous detailed analysis. We typically would look at all of the people involved. Different community members might speak to the strengths that they see in individual candidates and then ultimately someone makes a motion and we move forward. But all of that's captured in the public record. All of that is, you know, is visible if it's a, at least in the minutes, if it's a televised meeting, it's there. So is that an adequate description, do you think, or what have I missed in terms of describing basically what's going to show up in this memo to different committees?
Did you want to speak first?
Sure, if you don't mind. So in, in our previous discussions on this topic and what we got from Jeff regarding sort of a, a template or a blueprint for how to move forward, I think one of the things was you're not just looking at applicants who may have applied for a current opening at that time, but you're also looking back for people who may have applied when maybe there wasn't an opening, right? I think it was, I don't know if it was a year or two years.
I think it was a two-year, 18-month look back.
Yeah, you were supposed to go back and reach out to those applicants and say, hey, we've got a position open, you know, are you still interested?
Right, right. Not, not presume that, that they're still interested, but basically invite them to resubmit should they be interested.
Exactly.
Yeah. Yeah, exactly. That was something that we discussed and we'll have to think a little bit about, we, we want to make, we want to make it careful what's a recommendation. I think this whole thing will basically be posed as a recommendation, so we want to make sure that we're setting up individual committees with a manageable process. But yes, I think that should be part of what we, what we recommend. Is there anything else that said there are principal elements that?
I think just for the public's knowledge, I think we're all on the same page, but when you say the board, I think we meet the board or commission that has the opening. We'd be forwarding that information. So I just want to be really clear with the public that we're not meaning to forward everything to the select board. It actually goes to the board or committee that has the opening. They, that the, the potential candidates, then they bring a recommendation back to the appointing authority, whether it's the select board or myself or another appointing authority and then maybe we forward that.
That's, yeah, I'm glad, thank you for the clarification. So in what we're talking about tonight, this would be something that in some future world we would be asking that the DI committee in this particular case would, would observe. It, it would still be the case that they would recommend to us for, you know, ratification or approval. Later on the agenda tonight, we'll talk about, you know, a commission to investigate alternative forms of government, which has come, you know, before us with some energy. And I think we're looking to, to discuss and decide if we want to panel a committee. For members of that committee, we would actually be the, the board, the board's call, review the candidates and actually, you know, have this public discussion and make a recommendation in public media.
And I think a, a good example that we can go back to, and we did not have it written down, but we will, is the Robinson School Building Committee, right? I think we followed the process that you're talking about with that committee. It was directly appointed by the select board. It was a brand-new committee, so it was very clean at that point in time. It gets a little bit messy when there are openings, so we need to be very clear in the documentation of the board and committee members who are holding these meetings.
So maybe just quick comments, is the board comfortable with essentially completing the follow-through on this issue as, as we've described it? Yeah, Kristen?
So as, as a chair of a commission, I, I have followed this process since we had implemented this, let's just say, a pilot. And it has some pros and cons. I mean, one, you know, you, you, Pam and the Town Managers Office has been very helpful for going back and doing that research to find, hey, who's, who's basically applied in the last X number of years or months. And then you have to obviously reach out to those people. So it is adding some additional steps to a volunteer chair. It does lengthen the process because you have to send an email, hopefully get something back, you know? But that being said, you know, I still think it's a worthwhile process for it to move forward with despite some of those bumps because it does, I think, try to get everybody as engaged as possible, give everybody a fair chance to have a proper review.
Okay. Good. And just, just to be clear, Chris, Kristen would prepare this, this SOP document and we would review it as a group in a next meeting before it be sent out. So you'll have another chance to look at the specifics.
Right, right.
And where will that document live, Tom?
Right.
Uh, I don't know. Where do such documents live, Kristen?
I think this could live under, we could have it be a select board policy. It could live under the Town Managers page. We can talk about where it lives. It would obviously be public facing and every board or committee would receive that and we could have them receive it yearly just as a refresher as well. But it'd be open to other comments.
Yeah. That was one of my main concerns is how do you make this and keep it live with, with the, the, the boards and committees who, you know, have turnover of leadership, you know, people, you know, not volunteering after a certain period of time. I certainly think when a new board member is, takes their oath of office, that might be part of their welcoming package, if you will.
And the code of conduct stuff that we're working on may also be...
Be part of that process.
An onboarding thing.
I would include in that, like, the committee's charge or statement of purpose so that they, you know, that each committee member or board member, when they come in, has a packet to, to leave the Town Clerk's office with and has that part, you know, of that. But, you know, as, as a chair, you know, I think one of your responsibilities is when you pass the torch is to help educate the next chair and that'd be, that would be a key component, saying, hey, this is how you have to deal with this process.
Okay. Okay. So I think by consensus, we'll, Kristen will sort of move forward this draft in our next meeting. We'll take a look at what this is and make sure that we communicate it. So on us for that. Okay. Separate issue, well, I mean, related, but since this detailed guidance, this, this sort of standard did not exist, has not existed yet, is not yet implemented, we now turn to the DEI committee recommendation for, to move forward Lisa Kilpatrick to an alternative position. So welcome, Joe and Anjali. Thank you for being here tonight. Since you're here, would you like to just sort of explain sort of what the opening is and, and sort of the, the path that you took to make the recommendation you're making tonight?
Certainly. Thank you very much. It's, it's really our pleasure to be here and it's good to see Anjali as well as Lisa. And it's good to see the board. We, the committee has been active for five years and again, we certainly appreciate the charge that you've given us. The membership of the committee is now, now stands at 21 members. Over time, we've added members with your approval. At first, members joined and I think it was, it was meant to foster a strong base. But as the committee matured, we wanted to make sure that we would consider folks with a variety of, I think, really important and common sense considerations. What you just described is very helpful to hear and we certainly look forward to, to that being formalized. When it comes to this position, there was a, a seat through a process that we engaged in with the town, with the Town Clerk to establish its vacancy. But there was a due, sort of a due process approach to that. We wanted to make sure that that member was no longer interested in participating. That took more than a few months and then also the town needed to engage in a, a process of confirming that as well. And when that seat became available, we had an application from Lisa Kilpatrick, who has attended meetings ever since she applied, which was October or November of 2024. And so after the rest of the process was completed by determining that there was a vacancy, we voted at the last meeting to recommend to both boards, the school committee and to you all, that Lisa join as an alternate member. The school committee approved that recommendation last night. I also want to thank you all for approving recently a second student seat, which we find to be, will be a very beneficial part of our dynamic. Let me stop there. Anjali, would you please fill in what I missed?
Thank you, Joe. And I think you have pretty much added why we accepted Lisa's application. She submitted her application in November. She started attending the meetings, DEI meetings. She showed the interest. Her application is pretty strong. She has HR experience and as well as she has a knowledge, she has, her mission is inclusion. And looking at all those responses that she included in her application, that made her a very strong applicant for this particular open position and hence her application was accepted unanimously by the DEI committee. And that's why we recommended it to school committee who reviewed it yesterday and they approved it unanimously as well. And hence we are here to request that you approve Lisa's application. That being said, the process that you have outlined, outlined today, we will accept it and we will utilize that process for future openings for sure. But we have, as a committee, we have approved, Lisa's school committee has approved, so now it, it's basically on your table to approve Lisa's application as a DEI committee member. Thank you.
Great. Lisa, since you're, you're good enough to be here with us tonight, would you like to say a few words to the committee?
Hi, thank you for having me. I have great interest in being part of the DEI committee because as Joe and Anjali had pointed out, diversity, equity, inclusion is very important to me. I feel that I have a lot to add in terms of my background and experience and, and just who I am. I look forward to your, your decision.
Okay. Thank you, Lisa. Questions from the board?
I have one general question for, for Joe. Joe, you have, you have alternates. How many alternates do you have?
A lot.
I mean, you said, I remember when that committee started, I remember I watched it a lot early on. You had something like 21 or 22 members. And then it becomes a problem of getting a quorum, just other issues, and you reduce that number to, how many full-time members now?
We have, well, your first question was how many alternates? We have, by my count and by what's at the website, seven alternate members.
Yeah, okay.
So the charge was, I'm just pulling this from, from the charge and we'll double check that this is okay. Nine full members and 10 alternate members as of July 11, 2023, and then two full high school students.
So the only ones that are really identified as having another position like a select board liaison or something else, then it's, they're used, most of them are at large?
Yes. Most are at large. Correct.
So I guess it doesn't matter who's the alternate for what, for whom?
That's right. You're basically a bank of alternates.
Yeah. So, okay. Thanks.
Okay. Any, any questions from the public or online?
I don't see any hands raised online right now. Hold on, I do see something in the Q and A. In the Q and A, may I read?
Sure.
So Megan O'Connell writes, as a select board, it is within your purview to request the DEI committee reach out to the interested residents and give them fair consideration. I think we talked about that as a new process moving forward. And then I would also suggest having one applicant as a panelist, but not only others is inappropriate, it shows bias as to which one thing a DEI committee should work to avoid.
I'm not sure I understand. Can I just take a quick look at?
Yes, of course.
I think saying that having Lisa with us is showing a bias, but that's the, the name that's being put forward to be able to do.
Exactly. Our, our role here is to, is to review the recommendation from the committee. We're not the selecting body.
Correct, yeah.
We're, we're here to approve and ratify. So it, it isn't inconsistent with the past to have a candidate. So thank, thank you, Megan, for the comment. It's not inconsistent with the past if a committee is recommending someone for us to consider, for the candidate to be there. Just, I mean, to, to the extent there's a question on people's minds, I think it is our job to create clarity where we can in the process, we're going to do that. I, I think if there's a question in the air, should we suddenly hold committees that are in motion to a process that has not yet been released to them? I think what we're seeing here is entirely consistent with historical process. And so I, I don't think there's any, there's no issue in my mind anyway proceeding with the recommendation that it's formed and it's in. I think it's on us then to, to follow through and create this sort of clarity that we have. But we, to go back and retroactively apply a standard that they don't have in hand, I, I don't think makes a lot of sense or is fair. So that's, to the extent people are, you know, wondering that, that's on my mind. Yep.
Well, it looked to me like their process was fair. I mean, they examined, looked at the other candidates, attendance, background. I mean, I'm not sure that's accurate, but, I mean, my assessment is, I mean, they don't do that process.
Yeah, I think we could interrogate the process that they, that they did further, but I think we have not, we didn't give them guidance and many committees have followed a process very, very similar to what they've done. So we're talking about changing the process now and not applying a, a process we haven't published yet to what's happening, what, what's happened in the recent future, recent past, I think, if that makes sense. So it's, I understand the question, but sort of procedurally, I think it's much more fair if we publish the new standard and then hold people accountable than to sort of jump back in time somehow. Okay. Okay. If, if there aren't further questions from, from the board or from the public, I'll entertain a motion to approve Lisa Kilpatrick to the alternative position on the Diversity Equity Inclusion Committee for a term to expire July 13, 2026.
So moved.[1792.12]
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Lisa, for being here and your service, and Joe, Anjali, always a pleasure to see you.
Thank you. Pleasure to have us.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Joe. Next item up is a request from the Pedestrian Safety Committee to amend their charge to convert two of their liaison seats, school committee and Parks and Rec to seat, to two at-large seats.
Chris, would you like me to take this?
Sure.
Okay, sure. Is also, I'll take one at a time. You also have a memo in your packet from Tom Hinkle, who is the chair of the Pedestrian Safety Committee. I turned to Chris as he has been a long-term member there, so just wanted to ensure that I wasn't stepping on anyone's toes. So the Pedestrian Safety Committee is first asking the Select Board to amend their charge to convert the school committee liaison and the Parks and Recreation Liaison to two at-large member seats.
I think we would certainly support that, just, is there any brief reason behind wanting to make that change?
Yes. So what we found is our, that committee is very heavy with liaisons, so because of that reason, those folks are oftentimes very busy, and getting them to attend meetings can sometimes be a challenge, so we were running into some issues with making quorum. This gave us some more flexibility with, you know, attracting people who might be able to spend more time with the committee, and we've had a rash of applicants in the last couple of months, so it seemed like the right time to make the change.
Right, that's exciting. Okay. Any questions regarding the Pedestrian Committee, Pedestrian Safety Committee interest in amending their status seats?
No.
Okay. Any questions from the public? Okay. Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to amend the charge of the Pedestrian Safety Committee to convert two of the liaison seats currently held by school committee and Parks and Rec to two at-large seats.
So moved.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Next up, a request from the Pedestrian Safety Committee to appoint Chris Barrett as the Select, well, does that make sense?
Yes, because we are making some changes. So he was the Parks and Rec liaison. We did discuss at our last meeting that he would be the Select Board liaison. I'd just like another formal vote so we can update.
Didn't we just convert liaison seat?
Yes, we did. So Chris was the Parks and Rec liaison, so he no longer is that. He's going to be the Select Board liaison now.
Scott was the, was the previous Select Board, and so.
Got it, got it, got it. Okay. Thank you. Thank you for clarifying. Okay, so, so let me just read this. So the request from the Pedestrian Safety Committee to appoint Chris Barrett as the Select Board liaison for a term to expire May 15th, 2026.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah. Good vote for yourself. The request from the Pedestrian Safety Committee to appoint Jason Sobel to a resident at large position for a term to expire June 30, 2027.
Right. So this would be the school committee position that is being changed to the member at-large position, and then we will have one vacant commission, member at-large position after this and one alternate member at-large. We have one field alternate position at this point in time.
Okay. Thank you.
We actually have the applicant here. You wouldn't mind, since you've been sitting patiently?
Yeah, absolutely. Please, welcome. Jason, would you mind coming up to the mic and just introducing yourself?
He is a super-qualified applicant, I may add, so excited to have him on the committee.
On the table or?
This, that one right there, it's perfect.
whichever one you want.
If you could just give your name, your address, and just briefly your background, what you're interested in about the committee.
Sure. Good evening. My name is Jason Sobel, resident at 11 Drobridge Road. Walk around the neighborhood a lot with my wife, and my professional background is I've been a traffic and transportation engineer for over 20 years in Massachusetts. That includes both public and private sector experience. For about six years, I was the Director of Transportation for the City of Newton. I have a lot of experience with, you know, traffic calming projects, pedestrian safety projects, safer school projects, all sorts of that fun stuff.
Sounds like we'd be lucky to have you. Any, any questions for Jason?
No.
Okay, great. Thank you, Jason. So with that, I'll accept a motion
Thank you.
To appoint Jason Sobel to resident large position on the Pedestrian Safety Committee for a term to expire June 30, 2027.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you. Review and Discuss Form of Government Study Committee Creation. So, thank you, Jason. So you may recall that from a number of places, there was an interest in, there are basically three different forms of governments available to a town like us. Open town meetings, which we currently have, representative town meeting, and a council form of government, which can take a couple of different forms. There was interest, sort of side interest from recent town meetings, and then specifically the legal wing voters reached out and said that they felt like the time was right really to reinvestigate this. The town has done a few things, one that directly addressed this, others that have touched this in the past, but there seems to be a, you know, a consensus amongst a lot of interested parties that now's a good time to take a look at this again. What we could decide to do is create a, sort of a study committee or a task force, I'm not sure exactly what the right form of the committee would be. Basically, to go out and conduct a study, I think we'd recommend that they do, you would first want to define the scope pretty carefully, so I think in this case, there's a lot of questions about engagement, use of technology. I think we'd want to limit the scope of this to the three forms of government available to us and what the pluses and minuses are. I think we'd probably ask that they do a couple of things as, by way of prep, look at the 2008 study that the town did on this to absorb those lessons, look at the town meeting participation study, which has a lot of things that relate to accessibility in town meeting. The Acton League recently did a deep-dive study of this same issue and brought in experts from the states and from, you know, moderators from each of the different forms of government that are out there. It's a very interesting watch. Genuine, it sounds like I'm being facetious, I'm not, it's actually really interesting. So I think what we might do is, you know, ask that interested, first, reach out to see if you'd be interested, go through the process we described earlier, give them a charter and, and sort of a suggestion of what they might do to get a running start, and then sort of lay out a timeline with them from there. So we're not, we're not doing that tonight. Tonight, we're just sort of sharing this by way of consensus with you, and we could come back at a future meeting and say, this is what we're proposing in terms of a charge, this is what we're proposing in terms of membership, number of people, and outline a timeline. That's on, right?
If the board is amenable to that, the staff would take on creating that draft charge and chalking that back with you.
Correct. I'd like to understand, like, to your point, is it a task force? Is it another committee? Is there any difference between the two? Like, we've done, I've heard different
Yeah, I don't know what the right nomenclature for this is. I mean, we would, we would appoint the members through the process we were discussing earlier, but I don't know.
So let me discuss this with Division of Local Services, because they've done a lot of studies for municipalities over the past few years and see what they've seen other communities do. Is it done primarily through the Select Board? Is it done through a task force? Is it done through a committee? Is it done by the staff? So I want to get kind of what they're seeing, and then we can come back with some suggestions.
Yeah, that'd be great. I think there is some interested and informed residents that would love to participate. So on the range of things, I think getting some civic engagement would be pretty helpful. I did talk to the moderator, Angela, our moderator, and she is very interested in this, but they had the excellent point that if it is, could ever later come before town meeting, she needs to be an enthusiastic observer and not directly dissident, so, but she's, she's read in, thinks it's an interesting, worthwhile thing to do.
Yeah, I think that using that committee in 2007, whatever year it was, is a starting point of who the representatives were. They represented certain parts, you know, the winning voters, you know, organizations were there.
Yeah, it was really broad participation.
Being on that committee, and so I think we did, took a pretty good look at it. That may be a good starting point, and then to say, you know, what's the foundation, and how many at-large, and then hope that.
Yeah. I think it's a great suggestion, because that was a well, at a very high level of participation, so, yeah. Okay. I think we're in consensus on that.
Yes.
No need to vote. And then a request from Tricia Liquors to rescind the approvals for the transfer of license approved at the Select Board meeting on January 28th, 2025, and allow the all alcohol packaged store liquor license revert back to the prior licensee Nara Yan Swarup Corp. and Manthan Patel as manager. So there's background information on this in our packet, it just went either
I've never experienced a rescinding. Did they actually approve it for the other one?
It was approved by the town and the A B C C, and the organization would like to go back to the prior order, they're not moving forward with this Tricia Liquors Incorporated.
Right, I think the, I think the financial transaction fell apart.
Okay. But the A B C C did approve it.
Yes.
Interesting.
So is this, I mean, is this the correct process? I guess there must be a way that if the financial
Yeah, so we've reviewed this with the Town Clerk and Town Council, and the Select Board must vote to rescind that, and then we file that with the A B C as well, C C as well, so it aligns it.
That is the way we do this.
That is correct.
Okay. Any, any questions about this? Okay, I will ask for a motion to rescind the approvals for the transfer of liquor, of license approved at Select Board meeting in January 20th, 25, and allow the all alcohol packaged store license revert back to the prior licensee Nara Yan Swarup Corp. and Manthan Patel as manager. Yes, I'll, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, everybody. Board reports and updates again in the past things. We talked about doing a spotlight for different committees, that's still in front of us. Kristen and I discussed doing that and, but maybe doing that after we take our first spotlight on the, one of the strategic areas. So in our, one, some future meeting, we'll spotlight what our strategic plan area is, and we will come to requesting individual committees to come in and give us updates, but we're going to try to schedule that a little bit later, once we get it running in this first, first order strategic review. Anything else on board reports or updates? Okay. Kristen?
So purchase orders. Because it is the end of the fiscal year, beginning of the new fiscal year, there are a number of purchase orders. I generally read them off. I'm requesting if I could not read them, and if there are any questions by others that we could take those, as there's 20. Primarily, they're from the Technology Department and the Facilities Department related to yearly subscriptions that we renew on a July 1st basis.
Why don't we take just, just 10 seconds, and if anyone has anything they want to sort of call a hold on or ask a question about, we can do that. So just take a second to take a look.
I have one question. Is this F Y 26?
The majority are F Y 26, yes.
F Y 26 budget?
Yes, that is correct. All of them are within the budget.
All right.
Any, any questions for these that people have? A bunch of these are all part of what's already been budgeted, so no, no, no expense of new money, this money we committed. If there are no questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve the purchase orders as they appear on our agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And?
And we'll go through the contracts. So the first is for T E C, who is our transportation consultant for engineering services related to the Pleasant Street sidewalk design in the amount of $137,000 as requested by the Engineering Department. That is fully budgeted. The next is for Premier Mechanical for fiscal '26 and '27, hourly H V A C maintenance and repair services in the hourly amount of $144, Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., and $171 for off-hours and weekends as requested by the Facilities Department. We used to do some of this in-house, but we, as many other municipalities are facing, it's hard to recruit an H V A C technician. Majority of these are going to the private sector because of rates.
I have a question on that one.
You want me to?
Is there, is it a not exceed amount associated with this? We're changing the hourly rate and it may reduce the
Double check that, get down to that contract. Do you want to pull that up, Mike, while we're
Yeah.
We'll go through the other ones, we'll
Thank you, guys.
Absolutely. The next is for V F I S through Gallery Group for fiscal year '26. This is for our police and firefighters for their injured-on-duty coverage, and this is a yearly amount, $70,090, excuse me, $70,91. And the last is for Bergeron Protective Clothing for firefighter protective clothing in the amount of $24,828.60 by the Fire Department, and you heard about this in the transfers earlier this evening.
Is this in addition to the transfer?
No, this would allow for this purchase, for this contract to go forward.
Any questions about these while Mike's looking up to them?
It is not a not-to-exceed contract, it's just an hourly contract as needed.
Is there a budgeted amount? I mean, that's not critical, I think we're going to approve it, but
Well, it's going to come out of Jeff's maintenance budget, so.
Yes, exactly. So we have a limit in terms of the budget.
Okay.